Good morning. Welcome to today's meeting of the Health and Wellbeing Board. This meeting has been webcast live and will be available to watch subsequently on the council's website. Members of the public and press may record, film, photograph or broadcast this meeting when the public and the press when the public and the press are not lawfully excluded, providing due courtesy and respect are shown to others in attendance, in line with the council's published guidance. I would like to remind you, please, to turn off or change to silent any electronic devices. We are not expecting a fire drill. In the event of an alarm sounding, please leave the chamber by following the fire signs at the rear of the chamber. Fire evacuation instructions can be found on page four of the agenda. Well, welcome one and all. I'm always pleased to see so many people turn up, especially with the ongoing traffic issues we seem to have in and around Ipswich. Thank you. I know that lots of people come from far and wide to be here. And it does show the strength of the Health and Wellbeing Board and the importance to us all. Thank you for your attendance. We move on to the agenda with Agenda Item One, Public Questions. I'm advised there are no public questions at this time, which is correct. Item Two, Apologies for Absence and Substitution. Susan?
We have received apologies for absence from Henry Griffiths, who is being substituted by Kim Reach, Rachel Keaton, Rowena Lindberg, Captain John Cook, John, who's being substituted by Council Christine Shaw, John Dagmar, who's being substituted by Toby Warren, and Sarah James-Moore, who's being substituted by Helen Greg.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you for all those substituting today. It's very good to see you. Move on to declarations of interest and dispensation. Are there any declarations to be made or any comments? None at all? Morning, Becky. Welcome. That being the case, we move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. I've looked at the minutes of the previous meeting and I am content with those. Are there any issues coming from the board? No, there doesn't seem to be any issues on the previous minutes from the 17th of July. Thank you. And now on to the meat on the bone. We move on to Right Care, Right Person in Suffolk. I'd like to welcome Jane Topping to the meeting to invite her to introduce herself and present a report and slide presentation. Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Jane Topping. I'm Detective Chief Superintendent at Suffolk Constabulary and I'll be leading you through the Right Care, Right Person data. I hope you've all had the opportunity to review it. As you know, Right Care, Right Person started in October 2023. We've moved through the four phases of Right Care, Right Person, with the last, which was the Mental Health Act, Section 136 detention handovers, commencing in April 2025. The request of this meeting today is to whether we now embed this as business as usual and whether there's a requirement to bring this back to the board. So, as I said, the October 24 to June 25, and we've got all phases data. And the next steps is to move as business as usual approach with continued scrutiny and periodical reviews. We ask you to note the content of the presentation and provide any insight or observations on the next steps proposal. So, as you can see from the data, the attendance rates have increased slightly from October last year to June last year. However, it is still down to the previous, from the previous levels, as you can find in Appendix One. The volume, of course, has remained consistent, but there is always that summer seasonal rise that begins in June and that is reflected in the data. So, as you can see, out of the CADs that came, 594 out of the 1,264 were attended in June. Looking at the walkouts from healthcare facilities for the previous nine-month period, that was 136. The previous reporting period over the previous six months, that was 135. So, there is a slight decrease in those figures. From January this year, out of the calls that came, around 50% were attended by police. Moving on to the ambulance transportation. What I'd like to highlight is the really great communication between Suffolk Constabulary and the East of England Ambulance Service. We both have a clear escalation policy in relation to transport resulting in limited calls per month per service. And the Integrated Care Board has also contributed towards policies and understanding of the roles as well as procurement of additional service providers. And I think the data on this really speaks for itself. The numbers were already quite low, but they continue to reduce. The next we're going to look at is the 136 and the handover. We're really fortunate in Suffolk, we have three places of safety, which is split between three county policing areas evenly. And so we have a greater position than many other constabularies, which means that the handover time is already in a positive position. The data on this shows that the average is just below one and a half hours, with the ambition in the future to take that below one hour. And there is some additional data if you've had the opportunity to look at Appendix Four. So, just a brief summary on next steps. We've now completed all the phases and this is embedded with continued reporting mechanism and escalation pathways when required. We'd encourage all partners to continue to engage and collaborate. Phases Three and Four have had minimal change to the high level of service already provided in Suffolk prior to implementation. And as I said, I think that is borne out by the data. Suffolk Constabulary have planned reviews for all phases in March 26 and September 26. And we continue to train our newly new members of the Constabulary in the contact and control room, as well as refreshing training for those already in post once a year. So, the next steps is consideration of bringing the above meetings into business as usual and ending the requirements report into the future Health and Wellbeing Boards. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comprehensive catch-up. And I agree totally about business as usual. In our very, very busy times, we always, always have to be mindful of that. I'd like to throw it open to the board for comments. I'll start with Tim, please.
Thanks very much, Steve. Well, I just wanted to endorse everything that Jane has said. It has been a great success and I think some of us who've been on this board for some time, we can remember when we first started it, it was a tricky initiative to get going. And I think I would just ask everybody to remember, this is particularly focused on making sure people in difficulty get the right care, no pun intended for the title, with professional practitioners who really are mental health experts. And we've had, I've only had one issue that's come across my desk in the last 18 months and that was right back at the beginning. And I think if, Jane, I don't think there've been hardly any issues and it's gone down very well with support and the regular communication with this board and others. And I have to say, the relationship with the Foundation Trust has actually improved drastically over the last two or three years, which is very, very encouraging. So, I'm very supportive. I'm personally very, very pleased what's happened. Yes, there's the added benefit of saving police time, which is always welcome. But we mustn't forget that focus is on making sure individuals in distress are getting the care they need. And I think it's a great example, if I may say so, Chairman, of where by working together and understanding what's happened, including some, I suppose, fairly robust questioning, which is fine, that's what it's all about, to make it a success. So, I just wanted to make, share those comments with everybody. And I also want to thank everybody for their support on this initiative because it really has worked very, very well. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you for the very encouraging comments. We appreciate it. Ed, please.
Yeah, I'd just like to commend Jane and Tim. And I've got the perspective of seeing this rolled out in three counties in East of England and this has gone really, really well. I think part of the success has it, it's been kind of phased and incremental. Haven't tried to do everything at once and I think the partnerships have really flourished. And certainly when it was launched, I had my concerns, which I know I expressed, but you've proven me wrong, so very well done.
Thank you, Ed. Bobby?
Thank you very much. And yeah, I do feel that this is beginning to become embedded. We've been talking about this for quite a long time now. I think I would still want to ask some questions, particularly around our young people, not necessarily talking children, but that sort of cohort of young people between 18 and 25, where we still have responsibility for just making sure that we, you know, we all do everything we can to identify any additional vulnerabilities, especially if they're not immediately forthcoming. And I suppose I'm still curious to know how we're recording, what the impact is on other services, particularly the voluntary sector. But I'm really pleased to hear that the relationship with the Foundation Trust is more positive.
Okay, just on the 18 to 25 cohort, all of the calls that come in are still recorded and monitored. We have our Children and Young Peoples Board within the Constabulary, where we now have a focus on our adolescents, as we call them, the 18 to 25-year-old cohort, to try and make sure that in our call script, we are identifying those particular vulnerabilities.
Thank you, Jane. Are there any other questions or please?
Thank you. Just in response to Bobby's question with the voluntary sector, I haven't had any feedback that there's been any issues within the voluntary sector.
Thank you. Becky?
Thanks, Eve. Sorry, I just thought of the, I think you referred to it. But I know in other areas across the country where this has been introduced, the ambulance in particular, ambulance service in particular, have seen an increase of pressure. And I know you refer to it. Is that the case in Suffolk? And I will say, and okay, what Ed said, that I think this rollout, having, sitting on boards nationally, where we've talked about this, Suffolk appears to be one of the ones where it's actually worked really well. So, well done. That's really good. But I'm just, I'd be interested to know more about the ambulance and the pressure on the ambulance services because that has been a trend that I've seen nationally in the past.
Looking at the data, it doesn't appear to me that there's been a massive increase back over to ambulance, but I probably couldn't comment for the ambulance service. And I don't know if there is anyone here from East of England Ambulance today? No. The numbers are really low on the transportation and I know they have sourced additional provision. So, I don't think so, but it'd probably be a question better directed towards the ambulance service.
Perhaps we can get that, can we perhaps get, oh, do you know? Perhaps we could, or Ed, you know?
I'd like to bring Ed in, please.
I'm the ambulance services commissioner for the region and they're not reporting it as an issue in Suffolk. So, in terms of demands, they're very positive about the whole approach.
And Gareth, you had your hand up?
Thank you. It would just to not be left out. So, in terms of adult social care, there's not been any impact on our safeguarding or our mental health services. So, we've asked that question and, you know, just say thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Jane, would you like to close up? Thank you very, very much for the positive presentation and for all the comments that we've had from the floor. Any last words?
Yeah, just to make sure that everyone's happy that this then doesn't bring back to the board and we continue this as business as usual.
Well, thank you. The board are asked to note the content of the presentation regarding findings of Right Care, Right Person. I'm sure that we're going in the right direction. Are we all content with that? Thank you. We move on to Agenda Item Six, which is Suffolk Healthy Homes and its future direction. The report provides an update on the work being carried out across Suffolk, delivering housing solutions for patients whose health is impacted by poor quality of their homes. I'd like to welcome Theresa Howarth and Gary Crockett and ask them to introduce themselves and present the report and slide presentation, if I may.
Thank you very much. I'm Theresa Howarth. I'm the Strategic Lead for Private Sector Housing at East Suffolk Council. And in that role, I have responsibility for delivering a number of Suffolk-wide partnerships, which involve all of the Suffolk councils. It's quite a long time since I was last at the Health and Wellbeing Board. And I think the last time I was here was probably when we were beginning the journey with the health and housing work that has certainly moved on considerably from that time. So, what we hope to do today is to bring forward an update on the programmes that we're delivering, but also to raise the risk that these programmes face if we're unable to identify funding and a way of integrating them into the emerging system. We do have a health and housing crisis. A cost to the NHS of treating people living in a damp home is estimated by the Institute of Health Equity to be 6.9 million pounds a day. I'm going to hand over now to Gary, who will give an overview of the Suffolk Healthy Homes programme and then I'll pick up the end and summarise kind of where I think the next steps are.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Gary. I'm a Health and Housing Manager at East Suffolk Council. We have grown the Suffolk Healthy Homes programme over the past 12 years to deliver housing-related support to vulnerable people in poor housing. This support started with the Warm Homes Healthy People Service and evolved to meet the needs of the Suffolk system. This slide shows the services and projects as well as the funding model. The funding model shows the fantastic levels of collaboration we have in Suffolk to tackle these problems. However, the complex model is more vulnerable to funding interruptions. And on the topic of funding, I'd like to invite a very warm welcome to Bill Purvis, who's joined us from Derbyshire to see what we're up to in Suffolk and maybe steal a bit of best practice. National Energy Action of the Nation's Fuel Poverty Charity. And they recently gave us a quarter of a million pounds to continue this fantastic work. So, thank you to Bill and thank you to NEA. We package the programme in this way to enable health professionals to refer into housing support for their patients in a simple way, using one referral for multiple services. Our services are uniquely placed by being able to offer a free home assessment, something that is increasingly rare within the wider system due to resource pressures. Once in the home, nothing is hidden and we can make every contact count with onward referrals and support. Warm Homes Healthy People Act is a single point of contact for fuel-poor households in Suffolk. This is in line with the NICE NG6 guidance on reducing excess winter deaths and cold home-related ill health. From draft briefing to upgrading the fabric of homes, Warm Homes Healthy People provide support and guidance through often confusing grant landscapes with a risk of scammers. Last year, the service supported the delivery of 6.8 million pounds of government and energy company grants, aiming to improve energy efficiency and reduce carbon emissions. This means 398 households are warmer and safer with reduced energy bills after being provided with over 700 energy efficiency measures. These measures include loft and wall insulation, heating and solar panels. In addition, the service distributed over 500 warm packs across Suffolk to help keep vulnerable people warm and delivered lone heaters supporting patients medically fit to be discharged from hospital or at risk of hospital admissions due to broken heating systems. Next, Stepping Home is a service designed to reduce the impact of poor housing on the patient journey, aiming to reduce housing-related delayed transfer of care, hospital admissions and readmission. The service provides hospital and community-based housing discharge coordinators to support patients on their journey, as well as temporary accommodation to free up hospital beds. Over the past five years, Stepping Home across Suffolk has accommodated 159 patients and saved an estimated 6,161 bed days and completed 5,665 community interventions. Estimated savings over this period were just over 5 million pounds, meaning every pound spent on the service saves an estimated six pounds. This doesn't include an estimate of downstream costs such as social care, deconditioning, transport and risk of healthcare-associated infections. And lastly, perhaps the jewel in the crown of our programme at the moment, the NHS pilot projects. In 2025, we overcame the issues around data shown for the first time and have been able to combine data from health and housing. This enabled us to commence two innovative pilot schemes, targeting people with the worst health, living in the worst housing. In summary, we overlaid health data with housing data, such as energy performance certificate, which is an indicator of poor housing, to target those most at risk in their home. The first pilot was based in Kirkley Lower Stoff and targeted homes with a low energy performance with one or more respiratory patients living there. Joint branded council and NHS letters were sent to these homes with an offer of a free home assessment and follow-up calls were made to all households who didn't respond. The second pilot is based here in Ipswich at Burlington Road Surgery. Text messages were sent to their entire COPD cohort and then subsequently the asthma cohort and we're currently working with the immunosuppressed patients. Again, all patients who received the text but did not opt in received the follow-up call. Next, we're planning to work with the Grove Surgery in Felixstowe and a similar project in Stone Market involving social prescribers and community midwives. What this graphic shows is a significant conversion rate from outreach to opt-in. Response rates to previous marketing campaigns struggled to reach 5%. Some stages of this pilot, however, have seen response rates in excess of 70%. This demonstrates that not only do patients trust the message in the source, but these patients are experiencing a wide range of housing-related challenges and willing to engage. Crucially, this methodology is scalable and replicable. We are in conversations with colleagues from Essex and Yorkshire, who are in the early stages of their own health and housing journeys. The ultimate test of any service comes from the impact and experience and opinions from the services and health professionals. So, Sharon is a practice manager at Burlington Road Surgery and she said the following about our programme of work. Working with Suffolk Healthy Homes to reach our most vulnerable patients has given us the opportunity to support patients' wellbeing in a new and exciting way that is more than just about traditional healthcare provision. Jill is an OT at West Suffolk Hospital and said, "I would like to say a huge thank you on behalf of myself and my community patient for being so prompt with your response to an urgent request for banister rails. Your team quickly installed rails to enable her to get downstairs and be with her family and support her ongoing rehabilitation at home and her mental health. Your team has been amazing and made a huge difference to a young lady and her family." And Rachel Hunt from Norfolk and Wavine ICB, "We've really demonstrated the importance of thinking outside the box and beyond our traditional boundaries. We are ensuring that support is directed to individuals who have the greatest need." And lastly, Pat, a service user at Stepping Home. Pat was actually found on the floor after a fall down the stairs. Her neighbours heard the bang and alerted the police in Suffolk Fire and Rescue. Suffolk Fire and Rescue actually had to access her property via the garden due to clutter. And Pat said, "It got to the point where I was waiting for one of my organs to pack up. My life had come to an end. It was that bad. Without the support of Stepping Home, I certainly wouldn't be here today."
So, everyone we interact with is finding benefit in the services that we're delivering. Quantifying those benefits is a challenge. We currently use an estimate of bed days saved in hospital. We're hoping to secure some research funding to quantify the wider benefits which are delivered through having a make every contact count and eyes-wide-open approach to what we do. We, I think we have a shared vision for health and housing, which aligns to the NHS shift themes of preventing ill health, not treating it, and caring for people in the community rather than in hospital. Housing services are also committed to improving the quality of our homes, but we can't do it all. And what we're currently delivering are pilots that look to identify and prioritise those with the worst health, living in the worst housing. We're not alone in trialling our programmes. Some of the Norfolk councils have begun their own pilots. But Suffolk is leading the way. We've built up systems by trialling, succeeding, modifying and refining our models. We're now at a crossroads where without funding, our programmes will cease. So, we have a potential of either deciding, well done, you know, move on, or we can see the potential and embed the models that we've developed as business as usual within the emerging systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Theresa and Gary, for that comprehensive and welcome report. I'd like to throw this open to board members, ask if they have any comments or questions. And the first hand is Councilor Jean Candy. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Cabinet Member for Community Health Free Suffolk Council, I can attest to the fact that you guys put in so much hard work and the team does so well checking homes. And it's not just homes, it's people. All these people are being lifted out of living in miserable damp homes. And the health checks that they get per home, I think it says five per household, that's enormous, you know, and the care that goes into it. And I know it's difficult and I know that the funding is precarious, but this really does have to continue because the asset that that brings to the whole of Suffolk is amazing. We're not just leaving people to live in damp homes or without the care. We're preventing it in the future. And it's so good to hear from you, Gary, about the data-led, you know. Let's get on board with this, with this data. board with this, with this data-led. And I know that David Bever, who you work very closely with, is really keen for that. So I just want to thank you so much for all that you do, and let's hope that it can continue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. I'd like to bring in Professor Will Pope, and good morning and welcome.
Steve, thank you very much. I'm sorry, no, you're all right. You stay there, assuming you can hear me. Sorry about that, I didn't realise.
I can hear you, thank you.
No, I didn't realise I'd been silenced. I'd just like to agree with the last comments, but also to thank Gary and Theresa for the presentation. This hits so many buttons, doesn't it, across the wider determinants of health, actually? So very supportive. I see there was a suggestion, one of the things we're supposed to be discussing was whether this could be a pan Norfolk and Suffolk approach. I'd totally support that, and with the mayoral authority upcoming again as an agenda item, so I'd be very supportive of that too. The funding issue is a challenge. One question, Steve, if I may. It might be counterintuitive in some ways. You did actually touch on this very briefly, that this actually can also hit the net zero buttons and targets that we're looking for. So can I just check that you're working closely with our sustainability lead in the ICB, Andrew Urquhart? And if not, we can make that join-up happen. I'm sure you are, but just to check. So very supportive, Steve. And I'll go back to my silence seat.
Thank you very much, Will. Do we, could we have a reply for...
That's fine. So we work very closely with the Suffolk County Council Sustainability Team. The funding for the current government round of retrofit funding is administered jointly by Suffolk County Council and the district and borough partnerships, and part of our Warm Home Healthy People funding goes to support the most vulnerable to access that funding. Part of the problem that we have is that historically, applications for retrofit funding are complex, so the most vulnerable people just miss out because they can't cope with the application process. So again, through our, you know, home visits and our support, we're able to handhold to make sure that people who need insulation, solar panels, actually are able to access it. So very much so.
Thank you for that. And if I may, Will, I'm sure that we are all looking forward to a very, very close and very successful partnership with Norfolk going forward. And there are changes, we all know there are lots of changes ahead, but we will grasp the metal and we will move forward in further delivering care within Suffolk and Norfolk. Ed, I'd like to bring you in.
Yep, I think I should probably support my boss's comments, so, but thank you both. I mean, your leadership is exemplary, and it's been over a long period of time. We've worked closely together for a long time. So, I mean, the commissioning intention would be to continue support for this, funding-wise, and scaling it up. An immediate opportunity is that the government have announced 43 national neighbourhood implementation sites, and Suffolk is pretty much covered. I think we're the only area in the country to have such sort of coverage. So we might be able to leverage that opportunity and the funding that's going to come from that opportunity to build on this, because I think combining housing data and health data is really innovative, isn't it? And I'm sure Anna's been involved with that, driving that. So it's just a great opportunity, isn't it? So my intention would be to support this to flourish.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. I believe, Tim, you had your hand up, you're, I'm trying to follow down the list, but people keep popping up. Tim, please.
No, thanks very much. No, I definitely think this needs to continue, it's a fundamental issue. This may not be appropriate, but one of the things that's always concerned me is if you look at victims, particularly female victims of domestic violence and/or abuse, and I emphasised the piece on violence, the shortage of accommodation for safe homes for where they can go, particularly if they've got young children, can be very, very distressing. I know there are charities that we all support, but actually it's a longer-term solution. And the other point that we're very keen to try and develop is this rehabilitation of offenders to stop re-offending. And one of the biggest challenges, of course, once people are released from jail, is adequate housing. Now, I'm not trying to pile extra work, well, I suppose I am actually trying to pile extra work onto you, actually. But no, these are serious issues, and I absolutely get it about capacity, pound notes, resources and so on. But if we were to look at an economic assessment of the difficulties of not having the provision that you're talking about, we're going to be in a hell of a mess. And so more power to your elbow, anything I can do to support this and spreading it out a bit more, please feel free to, well, I suppose nag me and to give some evidence, because it's a really important issue. And when I've met people released from prison who are unsuccessful, and particularly, of course, with this early release programme, that is fraught with difficulty, many of them re-offend very quickly because, A, they're not prepared to be released, and it's not something you just do, but it's the accommodation as well. A big issue, but I just wanted to mention that, so if that could be tagged on somewhere, and if it's not relevant, please tell me to shut up and go and do it somewhere else. But it is a major issue for us here in Suffolk, and certainly in Norfolk as well, that is
Thank you for raising that, Tim. There are so many facets of this that no one should be left behind. I'd like to ask Christine, councillor Christine Ford, please.
Thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to be on this meeting. I'm just substituting. I'd just like to echo several comments here on what a practical and powerful project this is, and I'm really delighted that this work has been going on. I just want to sort of speak up on behalf of GP practices. I'm Chair of a PPG in Ipswich, and I know how notoriously difficult it is contacting particularly vulnerable patients in a practice. And I think phoning, as you've done at the Burlington, and texting is absolutely vital because so many people are digitally excluded. It's no good banging out emails to people, it doesn't work. So I do hope that if this, and I really do hope that funding will be there, that those methods will continue to be used, because I think that's very important. Thank you, Chair.
Can I just respond to that quickly, Steve? Is that all right?
Yes, of course.
So interestingly, the Burlington Road Project, anecdotally, what they found, as well as the people that we helped directly, was that a number of their kind of frequent flyers diminished because someone had been in their home, spent time with them, listened to them, and that although they can't quantify it, they know that people that they were seeing every week are no longer coming into the surgery so frequently. So even if we weren't able to do something practically for them, they'd been listened to, they'd been understood, and maybe they'd been pointed to a befriending service or a food bank, or something that gave them interaction with other people. And it's those benefits that are so difficult to quantify but are so meaningful in terms of reducing system pressures.
Thank you. Councillor Phil Fercop, Roger.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you very much for the report, it is something that I welcome. I've got two points arising that I wish to mention. I remember in the winter of 2022, when energy prices were at their highest point, I went to see a resident on the Springlands Estate in Sudbury. For those of you that aren't familiar with the Springlands Estate, it is one of the most statistically deprived areas of the Beber district, overspill housing that was built in the 60s. And I remember going into one particular resident's home, and they said, don't take your coat off, haven't got the heating on. And they had their linen horse up in the corner, and I looked up on the ceiling and you could see the mould starting to form, you know, and I think that absolutely goes hand in hand with what you said, so I welcome your emphasis on the heating element. The other point, just regarding funding, of course, resources are limited, as you quite rightly made out. I wondered, is there perhaps an opportunity for the other districts in Ipswich Borough across Suffolk, perhaps to join Beber and Mid Suffolk in their work that they've recently done on working with Historic England, to make it easier to retrofit listed properties? Listed properties aren't always grand, large homes, they are often small, as we well know. This is something in the planning sphere that could have tangible benefits across the boards that wouldn't necessarily require public funding. So I wondered, has consideration been given? If not, could consideration be given to working with our planning teams outside of Beber and Mid Suffolk and enhance their work? Thank you.
Thank you. We're currently in conversations with planning teams across Suffolk. We recognise that a lot of homes in Suffolk are very old and the retrofit options are limited, and we're also working with planning to fast-track and see what can be done. Unfortunately, with some properties, there's only so much you can do, but we're working with all of our system partners to scope out options. Unfortunately, a lot of our housing stock is very old and there are limited things you can do to those properties.
Thank you for that. Councillor Bobby Bennett, please.
Thank you. Imagine this, I'm going to ask a question about children and young people. As an aside, we were met with a load of lead members from across the country at the weekend, and we all agreed that our role on the Health and Wellbeing Board was to say, what about the children? So in that vein, I just wanted to know, is there more we can do, looking at all age? And I'm thinking particularly of where there might be emerging health issues for young children, is that, are we doing everything we can to try and capture that if they're not necessarily engaged with their GP yet, but maybe our social workers may know something? I just wanted some clarity about how that might work.
Absolutely. I think our goal is to focus on a range of vulnerabilities, from young to old, those disabled and with long-term health conditions. To give you an example of some of the work we're doing, we're working with West Suffolk Hospital. We had a training session where we upskilled some of their respiratory consultants and GPs who work in the respiratory space, specifically with children with asthma. And as we moved to Stowe Market to do some more work, we plan to target the 0-5 and children with asthma. I know Suffolk has significant problems with childhood asthma and respiratory-related emissions over the cold weather, so that's definitely something that we're focused on.
Bobby, please.
That's an excellent answer, and my only nervousness is looking at the page 32, is that the finance for Stepping Home is at risk from, I think, November this year?
Yeah, the funding model, as I mentioned, is complex. So West Suffolk Hospital Fund, West Suffolk Stepping Home, that funding has just been extended until March, end of March next year, but it is at risk post that. Stepping Home is mainly aimed at those over 65, 75, that's mainly aimed at older people who perhaps fall in a home and need grab rails and banisters. I think the emerging data sharing agreements and data alignment with GP surgeries in the ICBs is a way that we can proactively target those with young, households with young children in. The Kirkley project was an example of that, a lot of those properties had young children in them. The beauty of this methodology is we can choose any cohort and target them in a really simple and effective way.
Thank you for that. And next on my list is Arthur, please.
Thank you, Chair. With a different hat on, I chair the Suffolk Housing Board, so you'd expect me to say that I'm incredibly supportive and proud of the work that's been going on, not that I can claim any ownership of it at all, nor will I try to. I think the key thing for me, though, is that this is probably the best example, or certainly one of the best examples, of the system, whatever that means, working, so that we are approaching people as individuals and not worrying about services and particular delivery against any individual service area. That said, and I think I've probably said in this room before, I am not a fan of pilots. The reason I'm not a fan of pilots is because it's fantastic, and then we either carry on funding the pilot, which we've already said will be a challenge, or we stop funding the pilot, and we never mainstream it. So I was really reassured, because I was going to have a conversation separately with Ed anyway, really reassured with what he said earlier, and I'm more than happy to lean into that as well, because this has to be mainstreamed, not least because it's costing us more not doing it than it would be doing it anyway. So it's got to be mainstreamed. I'm also not a fan of evaluations either, purely because it's blindingly bloody obvious. It doesn't need, unless it's to unlock other funding, it really doesn't need a whole load of evaluation to point out the really blindingly obvious. But yeah, it's fantastic, and I'm more than happy to work with Ed and anybody else around the room to work out how we do mal-mainstream it, not just carry on funding pilots.
Thank you, Arthur, and thank you for that comment. We do always need to be critical of the things we do. Only in that place can we bring things forward and improve them. The next on my list was Valerie, please.
Which is actually quite helpful, because Arthur kind of stole a bit my thunder there around system thinking, because I think that's something that I always talk about when I'm here, of how we do it. And I think I've worked with you guys for a while, mainly on the periphery of it, but I think we were in the early conversations when you first started, and they've been working well with University of Suffolk to explore some of the evaluation. Now, I think, to me, it's how do we learn from this? So it's not about evaluation to say, is this really good? I think you're right, we've got that, but it's how do we learn from this so we can then put that in other places? What are the good things that they're doing? How are they getting people to work together? And I love the thing around using the data, you know, the public health management data that says, we can target specific people, we can actually go out there and we can actually go there. I think that's really good. So I think the more that we can do of that, but how do we then carry this into other areas? Because, you know, that to me would be the power of learning from this project. And I'm absolutely with you around, why do we keep doing good things and then cutting funding? And, you know, housing is fundamental to everybody's rights, you know, that's where people usually feel safe. I get the point that, obviously, there's some domestic violence and we've done some work on that, but how do we make people feel safe in those houses? How do they make sure that they are the best places that people can grow up? Because without that, you know, whether they're young people, older people, whatever, they are just going to, you know, have really challenges in life. So housing is probably really fundamental, so I'm pleased that we are looking at supporting this further. And, you know, I would be keen to say, how can we learn from this, both on this project to make it better, but how can we learn from this and make things in the whole system work better as well?
And I just have a quick example of how we're already using this in other areas. So I think Act of Suffolk are using this in Felixstowe to target people with COPD who smoke. So the beauty of this is the data is already there, we just need to be brave and work differently and use it in different ways for the benefit of the vulnerable patient. So we are learning and we are already implementing it.
And my just comment is quickly that whilst I accept your point, Arthur, I think there are, you know, if you're seeking sort of government endorsement of what you do, you have to evaluate and you have to show the benefit.
Thank you, Valerie, and you make a very good point. They often say, or people often say, that every day is a learning day, every day is a school day. But everything that we learn should be a legacy, and that legacy should be taken down, and we should be able to move forward from that legacy. But thank you for that comment. Bex.
Thank you, Steve. Arthur said a lot of what I was going to say, so you must have been reading my mind, but I was to sit on the Suffolk Housing Board, and this is really great work, and in fact it's essential work. It's not just, it shouldn't be in a pilot, it should be everyday business because it is that important. And so, and a lot of this needs ownership, and it needs ownership from a system-wide, so someone needs to take responsibility for this, rather than having separate pilots that go across, and this gets funded by this, this gets funded by that. So it would seem to me that, Tim mentioned about giving people extra work earlier, that the public sector leaders should own this as a project, as a system-wide approach, because you've got all the, you've got all the leaders for the whole system in that space. And if they own it, if they endorse it, then you're already one step on the ladder of it becoming a system-wide approach. And I'm not sure if they've got any funding left, but they did have funding, and I know the housing board has benefited from some funding. And then, and I think as a delivery group, the housing board would be a great place. So you've got public sector leaders, the housing board as a delivery group with that funding. I might suggest that that's something, perhaps pay to public sector leaders, and then going forward, that might get it more integrated into the system that way. and then going forward that might get it more integrated into the system that way.
Well, Becky, that's exactly what I was going to say, because there's cash sitting there from the Poor Business Rates Fund. And if I could be so bold as to say, when you're making choices like this, the political choice of priorities and what do you decide to put at the top of the list or not? And um maybe Arthur could come back to us and say, I absolutely agree. It's the bleeding obvious, or whatever it was you said, something like that. Um. Um. But no, it it is very, very important. It is fundamental. It's one of the basic needs every single person on this planet has. And um with the Poor Business Rates Fund, there is money there. And dare I say it without being over provocative, the choice and priority, which is more important than some other things. I'll leave that hanging. Um. But that's an important point and I would definitely support it. I sit on public sector leaders. I'm the longest um standing or sitting member for a long time. And I think um maybe Arthur, you could come back and we could make a recommendation on this board. Look, will you lot, or probably put it in better English than that, um actually prioritise this and get on with it, get a plan within a few months of how it's going to be mainstreamed because it is so important. And actually, I would suggest it's probably more important than many other things that have come to pass or not pass through public sector leaders. If you look at the spreadsheet of all the projects that have been funded, I think some of you might find it rather interesting. I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you for coming on on that, um Tim. Um. Therese, did you want to comment on that? You looked as if you were about to comment before.
Just had just had a very quick point. I think I think, you know, public sector leaders is is a very important forum and I think that's absolutely right. My concern is that, you know, we're moving to a Norfolk Suffolk. Um, you know, our combined ICB and the Mayoral Authority. I think those are new opportunities that we wouldn't want to miss out on as well. Not that I pretend to know very much about.
Becky, did you want to come back in on that?
Yeah, only that if it's established system, if if we establish it within the system, then when the mayoral authority comes into place, it is Norfolk and Suffolk, it's a lot easier to integrate into their um wider determinants of health, which which is the powers that they will be taking on as uh as in the mayor or office. Um. If you have pilots, it's a lot harder to integrate that into another system when it's just a startup. So I think it's a positive if we get it established and in and in building into the system.
Thank you. Um. Gareth, thank you for waiting. It's your turn next. Gareth.
Thank you. I mean, just to add to the conversation there, so really, really useful presentation and and great work of the the programme. I suppose just reflecting on the conversation afterwards, I think it's absolutely the right conversations for the Health and Wellbeing Board that we need to be getting into. There was an observation around the national policy position for the disabled facilities grant. And there was an aspiration for this type of conversation that was right was put into the Better Care Fund, obviously the Better Care Fund reports into the Health and Wellbeing Board, to link up NHS funding with local authority funding through the the districts and the county councils. So I think we should be able to get this onto a sustainable footprint. Um. Takes on things like the housing assistance policies and discretion use of the DFG and the regulatory reform order that sits with that. I think I'm right in saying there's going to be a DFG workshop in November and that might be a conversation we could pick up there around how do we get this into a more sustainable footing. I think it absolutely needs to continue and things like provision of minor adaptations and streamlining those processes will make a massive impact. So thank you.
Some good points there. Gareth, Ed, I'd like to bring you in on that.
Yeah, just just building on what you're saying, Gareth. I mean, we regularly receive reports from the Better Care Fund here and it it's a lot of money and we often ask, you know, how's it being spent? Could it be spent different? I mean, it'd be good to get advice from council officers, whether we could actually consider this as a u- u- using the Better Care Fund to support this as a recurrent source of funding.
Thank you. Counselor Bobby Bennett, please. No? Then Arthur.
I'll be brief, I promise. Um. So it was just thank you for the work. Uh. In terms of, I will take something back in through Suffolk Public Sector Leaders and and I agree, it makes sense for them to hold the accountability as a as a single place that operates across the whole system. The one thing on the money, uh there is money available within Suffolk Public Sector Leaders, but that does not mean this becomes mainstreamed. And so I I think that could help it get mainstreamed, but it is not the same as then being embedded. So I wouldn't want people thinking if they were sitting around the table that bears the answer, it isn't, but they can certainly help us get to the the mainstream of the funding.
Thank you, Arthur. Stuart.
So it's been really useful listening into all that. I think we've got to the point where I was going to get to, which is I think we should use the SPSL opportunity, but as has been picked up now, it needs to be how this is business as usual and funded from that. And Ed had already talked about the neighbourhood pilots and the work around that. I think we've got a number of things going on. We've got the the neighbourhood pioneers, I think. Uh. We've also got a community services review going on at the moment. There's a question about how we radically look at some of the service provision and what is sitting in that space. Um. And and also who are some of the other professionals? We have social prescribers and others like that. So there's a question of how do we make sure that our workforce have got a basic understanding which we're doing? So there's a wider upskilling piece across the system. Um. And then there's then a piece about what other professionals can have those conversations, because I think I picked up on the point was that it's not just when people, when when your teams go in, it starts a conversation with people that maybe haven't been having contact with around that. I also wonder from a funding perspective, and I'm quite happy to take this back into our growth highways infrastructure, we have the national money come down. Have we pushed that funding to say we want to take a small amount of that to enable a targeting of it for the most vulnerable people? Because, um, again, that's about a sustainability piece. Um. And and I think that's the inequalities piece that eighty percent of people will be able to do that, but there's some that would most benefit who can't deal with that process. So I'm happy to take an action away to actually ask the question, is is there anything in the the grant guidance that says we can't use some to support a more i- i- interventionist approach for those cohorts? So I think we've got to build it into business as usual in the changes with the health service. We've got the opportunity from SPSL maybe about continuing to put why we try and work this out. But also the BAU bit, can we use some of that money slightly differently to at least ensure that we're always taking an inequalities approach to this to benefit? So I think there's a huge number of options, but I mean, really welcome and continue to welcome the work that's being done. And 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 we could maybe after this, look at those different streams and with the Better Care Fund about what is possible around that.
Thank you for that, Stuart. And you're correct, I hope we are noting this as an action point, what you've just brought forward. It's very, very important. Um. Thank you to everyone for your input today. Um. It does, and it will help with future actions that we take in regards to Suffolk Healthy Homes. Um. The point of this, what's a future direction, and you have all helped towards that today. We, if there are no further questions, we have a recommendation that the board should be asked to endorse the approach being taken. We are asking for recommendations to be made to appropriate governance groups to ensure the budget settings, as we've just spoken about, and service design is taking place. And that models are being considered and developed further. I think that we've covered all those bases this morning, I believe so. Are we all content? Thank you very much indeed. Moving on to agenda item seven, which is our pharmaceutical pharmaceutical needs assessment, PNA. We've been asked to accept the findings of the Suffolk PNA and to approve its publication. And for that, I would like to welcome Anna Crisp and Natasha Bynes and invite them to introduce themselves and present the report and slide presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. My name's Anna Crisp. I'm a consultant in public health and assistant director here. Um. My colleague Natasha will introduce herself in just a second. Um. She's going to take you through the slides uh to support this refresh of the pharmaceutical needs assessment this morning. Um. I would just like to say one thing before we do that, which is to give my great thanks to everybody who was part of the Pharmaceutical Needs Assessment Steering Group for Suffolk. Um. I hope nobody's tried to print this document, because you will have seen it's a bit of a monster and it's a lot of work that goes into producing it. We have to have it staturally, staturally. Uh. So it's important that it's done and it has to be done right. And Tash will take you through the details, but if I could just offer my thanks to the steering group, um that would be great. Thank you, Tash. Over to you.
Thank you, Anna. Um. As Anna said, I'm Natasha Bynes, Head of Population Insight within Public Health and Communities. Um. As to echo Anna's thank yous to the steering group, um and as Anna says, it's a one hundred and ninety eight page document this time around. Um. So please don't try to print it unless absolutely necessary. Um. This is the fourth pharmaceutical needs assessment um for the current Health and Wellbeing Board. Um. And if we can pop the slides up, that would be awesome. Thank you so much. Um. So what is the pharmaceutical needs assessment? Hopefully, some of you have been through this process before. Um. It's a document that, as Anna mentioned, we have to produce on a three year cycle, officially owned by the Health and Wellbeing Board, but um for some of you may remember back in May twenty four, uh you kindly delegated that to Public Health and Communities to produce. Uh. As such, we also commissioned Sol Beyond to assist us in that process, to ensure that we provide a robust, fit for purpose pharmaceutical needs assessment that sits in place for the next three years. So, um, what do we, what does the PNA do? It enables local pharmacy service providers and commissioners to understand the pharmaceutical needs of the population, to gain a clearer picture of pharmaceutical services um currently provided in Suffolk, make appropriate decisions on applications for NHS pharmacy contracts, commission appropriate and accessible services from community pharmacies, and to clearly identify and address any local gaps in pharmaceutical services as well, as well as targeting services to reduce health inequalities within local health communities. So a lot of um, a lot of potential lenses for that document to be used for. So the one that's currently available on our Healthy Suffolk website and is the approved document is from September twenty twenty two. Uh. But those who have also gone through uh the papers for today will notice that at the top, very top of that pharmaceutical needs assessment page is the twenty twenty five document awaiting approval. So, um, taking us on to the next slide, which is a not very clear map at uh that size of screen. But I promise you, it notes every pharmacy uh across the Suffolk area uh with those little uh blue and green dots. It also notes that those pharmacies in surrounding areas and notes that for some communities within Suffolk, their closest pharmacy might be across that border. So while we look at su- services for Suffolk in particular, we also pay attention to those in areas of Norfolk, Cambridgeshire and Essex as well. As at the time of analysis, which was December twenty twenty four, we had a hundred and twenty seven community pharmacies. And in addition to those one hundred and twenty seven community pharmacies, we had forty two dispensing doctor practices providing pharmaceutical services from a total of sixty seven sites. Um. And looking through the papers for this as well, you may have also picked up on the one million two hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty three prescription items dispensed each month between June and August twenty twenty four, an average of nine thousand five hundred and forty two items per community pharmacy in Suffolk, which is higher than the England average um and the east of England average as well. So what did the uh conclusions of the pharmaceutical needs assessment this time around say? So there are various definitions of what needs to be provided under necessary services, other relevant services and pharmaceutical services. They are provided in that main cover report, but for the purposes of timeliness for this presentation, what the conclusions of the PNA found were that NHS pharmaceutical services were well distributed across Suffolk, serving all the main population centres with a good access to a range of services commissioned from pharmaceutical pharmaceutical service providers. So also those um spread of pharmacies is supported by dispensing doctors um practices across rural ed areas and allowing for adequate access to the essential pharmaceutical services across Suffolk. Um. It has been noted through these findings, though, and as it it won't come as a surprise to colleagues across this room, that the number of community pharmacies in Suffolk has declined compared to the analysis three years ago, alongside a reduction in those open during the evenings and weekends. Um. Some colleagues may also be aware that the regulations in twenty, the uh pharmacy regulations twenty thirteen were updated to allow a hundred hour pharmacies to reduce their weekly total court opening hours to no less than seventy two. Um. In the twenty twenty two PNA, that meant that we had sixteen hundred hour pharmacies. This time around, we have thirteen. Um. And they are now seventy two hour pharmacies as of December twenty twenty four. This mirrors those national um declines. So um, so now nine point four percent were open in England in twenty twenty two and now that's seven point seven percent. So I I think we we are recognising that there has been a decline. However, um overall, as part of that pharmaceutical needs assessment, no gaps have been identified in provision either now or expected under the current analysis in the next three years for pharmaceutical services. Um. Also to note, as part of this process, we ran a public questionnaire. And so that was open, uh enabling people to respond either online, paper copies were available as well. We had fi- just over fifteen hundred responses, which was actually a rather large increase from last time around, where I think we had about five hundred responses. So we were pleased um that that many people um were able to respond both online and in paper and including um four responses in diary from Afghan respondents and Ukraine, eleven Ukrainian respondents as well. Small, um but notable and not representation we had last time around. Also, we have to do a mandatory sixty day consultation on this document. Uh. So that was in the public domain between May and July. That enabled colleagues um and anybody to feedback on the findings of that draft pharmaceutical needs ass- assessment. We had five uh responses, four of those agreed with the conclusions, one disagreed. What we did then is we reformed that steering group. We went through those um comments in detail and just checked uh and validated those and considered those as part of the process when we went to sign off this document. Um. So what we wanted to finish up by saying is whilst there have been no gaps identified in the current or fut- future three year provision of the pharmaceutical services in Suffolk, there are opportunities to strengthen pharmacy service, um especially in a proposed ten year alignment with the ten year plan and change NHS initiative. So there is obviously opportunities around a focus on prevention, management of long term conditions, primary care access, ma- medicines management, health inequalities and integrated care. So in summary, we believe the um pharmaceutical, thank you, Anna, is now uh ready for publication, but we would like your approval on that. We have identified no gaps as part of that PNA process, but the PNA does uh keep uh be kept alive by a supplementary statement process as well. So this document doesn't just sit here for the next three years on a shelf. We regularly review applications, changes in ownership, hours, they then get checked. Um. And if necessary and needed, a supplementary statement then gets published alongside that pharmaceutical needs assessment. We also regularly review that mapping documentation as well. So we do an annual uh review and update of the map of the pharmacies um to ensure that that document is kept alive. I think that is it. If there's anything you would like to add, Anna?
Thank you, Tash.
Thank you so much.
Um. Thank you, Anna, and thank you, Natasha, for those um wide data numbers. It is amazing just how important pharmaceuticals are to all our residents. I I continually hear of the pressures that are set on pharmaceutical needs. Um. Many of our residents complain that they have to wait too long at their individual uh pharmacists. Um. And it is good that we do follow and look at our own wants and needs. Um. Really coincidental is that I was watching the German um late night news a couple of nights ago. And um in Germany, they're running the same sort of thing at the moment, a pharmaceutical needs assessment. And they were feeling the pressure of lots of skilled staff leaving that industry and and the worries that they had, uh not only in that, but other areas. So we're not alone looking at this. It is Europe wide. Um. I'd like to open the um to the board for any questions and I've, the first name I have on my list is Bobby.
Yeah, sorry. I'm not going to ask about children this time, actually. Um. I wanted to say that every time we get a report from KNI, I'm I'm just bowled over, but not only the the depth of data, um the knowledge behind it, but also the way that you manage to put it in a way that I can understand, that I find fascinating and you make it really accessible. Um. I I know we're incredibly data rich, but I also know how hard your team works. So if you could just pass my thanks back to you and them, because it is, it's quite something. Um. I'm, I, it it's it's very reassuring, particularly when you see the map with everything overlaid to see, you know, including the dispensing GPs. Um. But obviously, we know community pharmacies do far more than that, um particularly for um, okay, children and young people who might not want to go through their GP and 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 need things that they can get from the pharmacy. What I'm curious about, and this might be a conversation afterwards, is of those community pharmacies, how many are reliant on 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 a single chain? I mean, I know we've seen sort of supermarkets um withdrawing pharmacies from from some of their stores, but you, i- is is there a risk or a reliance on any one particular chain throughout Suffolk?
Thank you, Counselor Bennett. I will pass your thanks on to the team in the steering group. It's very kind. Um. There are chains operating, pharmaceutical chains operating in Suffolk, but actually we have a very mixed provision here. We are not as dominated by chains as some other parts of the country. We are not as dominated by chains as some other parts of the country, which, I mean, chains bring advantages as well. So I think that mixed provision is important. But just to reassure, we do really have a kind of a big spread of providers. And I don't see that as a particular risk just at the moment, but it is something we would continue to keep an eye on. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Will, would you like to come in on that?
It's on a different subject, Steve. Is that, is that okay? Yeah. Thank you for the report. And Natasha raised this, but I'm thinking about paragraph 30 on page 38, the number of dispensations, prescription items per pharmacy. Is the, I realise the answer might be too complicated, you know, for now. But is there, is there a reason or what's the reason for that roughly 30% increase over the national and regional averages for the number of dispensations? And also, what's the trend? I noticed that was a June, July, August period, which obviously is a certain chunk of the year, isn't it? Is that relevant? So is there a trend? And I suppose the final question is, should we be worried about that? You know, is there anything about that absolute number that we should be concerned about? Thank you.
Anna.
Thank you Professor Pope. I can't give you an exact kind of proportion, but my sense of that is that we have a much older population than the England average in Suffolk. We know that a significant amount of prescribing is linked to the management of long-term conditions, you know, complex conditions, and we have an older population. So we have proportionately more people living with those sorts of conditions in their lives. So as a sort of top-level number, I don't think it does give me cause for concern. We do monitor dispensing statistics regularly in my team. We can look at particular categories of medication. For example, we look at antidepressants and things like that. And again, we keep a close eye on that every month actually, and I don't see reasons for concern related to that. I think there's two ways of looking at that. There's a sort of, you know, is this over-prescribing? Is there too much? But we also know very much from the evidence base that some groups will be under-prescribed. I'm thinking particularly around depression in older people. We know that is under-diagnosed nationally. So it's a little bit of a complex picture, but we do monitor the data carefully. We look, we look for trends and on the face of things, that doesn't concern me particularly much. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Anna. And thank you, Will. That's very relevant. Whilst this is a statutory obligation, it's one that we do with great pride. And of course, we focus on the data to be able to make sure that we are covered here in Suffolk. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? No, we seem to have covered that quite adequately. So the board, the recommendations are the board's being asked to accept the findings of the Suffolk PNA and approve it for publication. I'm more than happy to do that and I hope we are in agreeance. We are indeed. Thank you. Which leads us on to agenda item, oh, sorry.
I'm so sorry councillor Wiles. I just wanted to make one final comment if I may. It links to the conversation you were having earlier about warm homes. Just to say that we have been working in parallel through this process with colleagues in Norfolk and we have started to have some exploratory discussions about whether it makes sense to do a Norfolk and Suffolk pharmaceutical needs assessment next time around. That of course would be a decision for the board, depending on whether or not the regulations change in the meantime, which is the other thing that might happen. But just in case, that's useful for colleagues to be aware of. We are considering that for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna, and that is very, very useful. The changes ahead are the consequence of that as we will be working much closer with Norfolk going forward. And I believe that's a good thing. It will cover, I care less about the geographical footprint of the area, more about the people who live within it. And thank you to everyone who comment on our future cooperation and hopefully good work with Norfolk. Which leaves, which moves us on to agenda item eight, the information bulletin. The information bulletin includes reports from scrutiny committees and partnership groups. And there is one bulletin available in your papers on the, on Feelgood Suffolk. Please note, please read and if the, and moving forward, if we have any information or any comments or things that we could bring forward to the Health and Wellbeing Board, please, please do so. Staff are here and we are more than happy to take on board anything that we may be able to use going forward. Yes, please.
Thank you. I had a question regarding Feelgood Suffolk because when the partnership was first set up, there was conversations about the voluntary sector being included in the delivery of that service. And the questions come from the network is how is that being considered? And is that still on the agenda?
I'll need to come back to you Carol. I know there have been discussions and working with the central team that now run Feelgood Suffolk about, about how it evolves into the next, into the next step. So if I take an action away and I'll get the team to come back and I'll come back to you.
I just mentioned that there is on the papers, the Forward Work Programme for the Forward Plan. And yeah, and Stuart would like to comment on that.
Sorry councillor Wiles. So just to give a heads up, so this year's annual public health report is focusing on youth social action. And we'll be working with young people across Suffolk to understand what's important to them and telling the stories of what's been going on. One of the things we're proposing to do is to maybe use the January Health and Wellbeing Board, actually to not be a formal board, but actually to have a workshop around that, which could be, we're hoping to work with partners to have it actually by, by young people, for young people bringing us in as part of that. But actually shifting the power base that we're there to listen, they're there to lead around that. So that's what we're thinking about doing in, in January. So something different. But actually, we've been trying to do something with the board for a while and I think it's quite unfair sometimes asking young people to come into this arena. And so, so actually, that's what we're thinking of doing.
Thank you Stuart. I seem to have had a paperwork malfunction there. Bobby, you'd like to come back on that?
Yeah, I would. And Stuart and I have conversed about this with Sarah Jane for a while and I used to say I think it's a thoroughly excellent idea.
Yes, Stuart, yes, Stuart and I had a conversation about that the other day. And yeah, I think it is an excellent idea, looking at the, at the future and the idea of listening to our youth. Then we need to do what we say we're going to do. We need to sit down and we need to listen to them. But we need to listen to them on one level. Maybe this isn't the right place to do that. It can be intimidating. I still can't figure out my agenda papers for a start. But yeah, really, really good point and thank you. Thank you Stuart. Are there any other questions or comments before I move to a close? Well, thank you everyone for today. It's been really informative and I appreciate the way that everyone has had an input. It is so important to the future of the Health and Wellbeing Board. And the Health and Wellbeing Board really, really does have a strong future in both Norfolk and Suffolk and, and the health of our communities. I'd like to remind everyone that the next board meeting will take place at 10 o'clock on the 13th of November. Again, my thanks and I'd like to conclude business today by saying we are officially closed, but please, if you would, help us to clear the chambers by taking away any all your belongings paperwork and any other rubbish with you. And I look forward to seeing you all again in November. Thank you.